Hello everyone, this is the St. Matthew's ECC Church Bible Study. And we are happy to meet with you again. We're doing a series now on the wisdom books out of the Bible. And this is our second session. We'll have seven, and you'll find handouts for each session that we'll post on the Facebook group. And also, the recordings will be made available on Facebook and on our website for anyone in other countries or time zones that looks at this later on. As we know, there are some that follow us from far away. So we're beginning actually going through some of the wisdom texts tonight. And the first one I'm starting with is one that's probably well-known by all of you, but you might not have thought of it as part of the wisdom collection in the Hebrew Bible or in other religions. The Psalms, the word comes from a word that means instrumental music. We believe that these were sung in liturgy in the temple, and they are still sung in Jewish liturgy as well as in our own. You will recall those of you who are Catholic, between the Hebrew Bible reading and the New Testament Pistle, we have a reading from the Psalms or a song from the Psalms, because that's how these were originally used. And there's a collection of about 150 of them. Half of them are attributed to David, though that's sometimes disputed as to whether he actually personally wrote some of these. But they're attributed to him, and they're important in both Jewish and Christian tradition, and even more so in the Eastern Christian churches than our own. The composition of these Psalms ranged at least five centuries. One of the oldest, we believe, was Psalm 29. We'll take a look at that tonight. The others are probably from what we term the post-Axilic period, roughly 530 BCE. And the most recent book in the entire Hebrew Bible is about 430 BCE, and that's the Book of Malachi. So we're talking extremely ancient, ancient manuscripts. And they probably were redacted and things added and things moved around into a single collection as time went on. And some people felt that there was maybe a concealed message in them that we don't know what it was. Augustine said, "The sequence of the Psalms seems to me to contain the secret of a mighty mystery, but its meaning has not been revealed to me." But others see it simply as a collection, and there are different themes in it. You'll note that there are themes of praise and worship. There are themes of confession and being sorrowful for wrong. There are themes of being angry as can be. There are themes that we count as wisdom books, wisdom songs. Now, the ones that are considered wisdom songs are pretty much agreed on. It's just a handful of them, and I gave you a list in your handout as to which ones are agreed upon as wisdom songs. And their main purpose seems to be to say that you can talk to God as plainly and as directly as you need to. You can tell him you're angry, you're angry at him, you're angry about what's happening, that you're in pain, you're alone. You can tell him anything. And so what I would like to do, I'm going to use Robert Alter's version on some of these that we read. And I would like to use Psalm 29 as one that we know is one of the oldest. If you have your own Bible and can find Psalm 29, the words may be slightly different than Robert Alter's version. But this one is considered a David's Psalm, and it is an exclamation, a thanksgiving, a prayer. And it is an adaptation, altered things, of a Canaanite song. But he says, "It's not like they lifted it from Canaanites and used it." It's not a translation from one, but some of the ideas in it are seen in the Psalm tradition in the Hebrew Bible. And he says, "It would be surprising that the poet did not make use of images praising and even mythological elements from the antecedent tradition with which they and their audience were acquainted." But he says, "It doesn't really depend on those earlier writings." So I'm going to read a portion of this 29th Psalm. "Grant to the Lord, all sons of God. Grant to the Lord glory and strength. Grant to the Lord his name's glory. Bow to the Lord in holy majesty. The Lord's voice is over the water. The God of glory thunders. The Lord is over the mighty waters. The Lord's voice empowers. The Lord's voice in majesty. The Lord's voice raking cedar. The Lord shatters the Lebanon cedars." And you kind of think of maybe an image of lightning striking a tree and splitting it in half. And he makes Lebanon dance like a calf, Syria like a young wild ox. The Lord's voice hews flames of fire. The Lord's voice makes the wilderness shake. The Lord makes the Kadesh wilderness shake. And here we kind of have an image perhaps of earthquakes. "The Lord's voice brings on the birth pangs of does and lays bare the forests. And in his palace all says glory. The Lord was enthroned at the flood, and the Lord is enthroned as king for all time. May the Lord give strength to his people. May the Lord bless his people with peace." So we see this one as one where the power of God, the majesty of God is being addressed. So if you will read Psalm 19 on your own, you'll see another version of that, which is just very beautiful. But the one I want to focus on tonight, which I think becomes a prayer and a meditation in its own right, and it is considered a wisdom song. And it's considered a wisdom song because we are in a conversation with God about who we are in relation to Him. And from that, my friends, comes the source of wisdom. So if you will turn to Psalm 139 or use the handout that we gave you, you can see this particular Psalm. "I have a very talkative cat tonight. She seems to be walking around yowling. Dakota, you can come over here if you want, honey." She's going to go to her other mama. So I'm going to read, rather than the version you have in your handout, I'm going to read the Robert Alter version. And they're very similar, but one is probably a little bit more poetic and more, in some respects, closer to the Hebrew, since Alter is an outstanding Hebrew scholar. And as we read this, use it as a prayer, because that's what it is. "Lord, you searched me, and you know. It is you who know when I sit and I rise. You fathom my thoughts from afar. My path and my lair window." Laire is kind of like a seat hiding place of animal or person. And window means that there's a breath of air that goes in and blows the rubble or trash out of the place. To get that image, "my path and my lair window," you clean out the place where I'm hiding in the woods. "And with all my ways are familiar; for there is no word on my tongue but that you, O Lord, wholly know that. From behind and in front you shape me. You set your palm upon me. Knowledge is too wondrous for me. High above I cannot attain it. Where shall I go from your Spirit? And where from before you flee? If I soar to the heavens, you are there. If I bed down in shield, there you are. If I take wing with the dawn? If I dwell at the ends of the sea? There too your hand leads me, and your right hand seizes me." You think of like a child being grabbed, possibly trapped when you're there. "Should I say, 'Yes, darkness will swathe me, and the night will be light for me?'" Darkness itself will not darken for you, and the night will light up like the day. The dark and the light will be one." In other words, what we think of as contrasts, they are all the same. They are one, they are unified, my God. "For you created my innermost heart, wove me in my mother's womb. I have claimed for fearsomely I am set. Wondrous are your acts, and my being deeply knows it. My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in a secret place, knitted in the utmost depth. My unformed shape your eyes did see. And in your book all was written down. The days were fashioned. Not one of them did lack, as for me. How weighty are your thoughts of God! How numerous their sum! Should I count them, they would be more than the sin. I awake and am still with you. Would you, the slay, the wicked God, O wind of blood, turn away from me who say your name to scheme? Your enemies falsely swear. Why, those who hate you, Lord, I hate, and those against you I despise. With utter hatred I do hate them. They become my enemy. Search me, God, and know my heart. Probe me, and know my mind, and see if that vexing way is in me. Lead me on eternal way." The term vexing, as Alter is using it, could mean idolatrous. It can mean pain or sorrow. Wayward thoughts that are thought to vex or cross God, God to be alarmed at in us, leading us out of those vexing thoughts. So think about this Psalm as a beautiful prayer for understanding the limits of human wisdom and the sources of true wisdom. When God searches our heart and probes us, knows our mind, and tells us, He finds ways of telling us that we are not thinking His thoughts. We're not thinking as He does. And we know that there are many thoughts He has that we are incapable of. But as we think about that, "I awake and I'm still with you. He made us in a secret place and made us uniquely above everyone around us. Not that one is loved any more or less, but we are each unique in God's store. Fearsomely I am set aside." And that means, in the Hebrew, could mean set apart, or it has been translated as wondrously made. Set apart kind of gets the idea of something unique, be distinct. And that's what Alter is getting at. We are made, be distinct. And so that is sometimes hard to fathom or understand, but that is what he's driving at in that Psalm. So these are examples of the types of imagery and ideas that you will get by reading wisdom songs. If you're really onto this, maybe take that list of wisdom songs. It's less than a dozen of them. And make a point of reading them and using them as a point of prayer and asking for God's wisdom, realizing the limits of our wisdom. And that is very important, particularly in the Jewish tradition. They don't think that Adam and Eve were punished for eating an apple. They think that Adam and Eve were not punished for wanting knowledge of good and evil. They think, and I think they have a point here, that they were chided for, punished for, seeking that wisdom outside the order in which God brings it to us. Let me give kind of a little bit of a personal example. I'll only give parts of this, but hopefully enough to make the point. Sometimes we have a spiritual experience that we're really not fully capable of understanding its meaning. Maybe years later, we'll have a better idea. Sometimes we seek out understanding, or sometimes a too eager teacher or instructor will try to impose a point of wisdom on a student who's not ready for that. It's not something they can yet incorporate into their own lives. Maybe because of lack of experience relating to the idea, or we all go through times where we reject certain ideas. "Oh, no, 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 it can't be that. I don't want to think about it." And the wisdom songs and the other wisdom books that we shall see give room for human beings to learn and learn first by waiting on God, who will reveal what we meet in the time that we need to know it, when we are ready for it. I had an experience in about 1970 where I heard words being said, and I kept saying, "Yes, Lord, yes, Lord, yes, Lord." But within 24 hours, I couldn't even remember what was said. My brain, my mind, my spirit, my soul was not ready for what came to me. I was given a glimpse, and I believe that glimpse was for the purpose of me knowing that I had a lot of work to put it mild. So if we don't at first understand, we can ask God, "Probe me," or as is the version that you have printed in the handout, "Probe me, God, know my heart. Try me, know my concern. See if my way is crooked. See if it is going in the wrong direction. Then lead me in the ancient paths." And I do think we have very much to learn from the ancients. If we don't pay attention to the lessons that they bring us, we lose so much. This is very important. For Jews and Christians alike, there is so much here. It is so rich, it is so deep. And if you spend time with this, and over the course of the next weeks, we will go through how wisdom comes and appears again and again in somewhat different forms and ways, and then finally, how she is shown in the New Testament. And I say "she" because the Jewish tradition, Rula, a breath, a spirit. It's a feminine term. You can use he or she, it doesn't matter. But this concept, this experience of breath of God upon us is one that we can treasure, and we can seek this out as we do our studying in the books and passages that relate to wisdom. So I think I will stop there for now. I've left you in the handout. Three very short opportunities to meditate on a brief segment of Psalms and a prayer. I wrote these prayers. You can write them for yourself. That may be better for you, and that is fine. So we will continue. Next week, we're going to look at Proverbs, which almost everybody recognizes as a wisdom book. We'll take a brief peek at two other books by Ruth and Tobin, which were not in the Protestant Bible. Boy, we're retreating, that's all I can say. At any rate, I will look forward to continuing, and we'll do some of Proverbs next week. And I want to again ask your help. If you are able to donate to St. Matthew's ECC Church, go to our website, press Donate. Any amount that you can spare will help us carry on our missions. It takes money to keep these things going. And we want to be there for you and people around the world and people in the St. Matthew's community, which is beginning to come back together in a physical way. But we will go on with our classes online, even after we're able to meet in person again. Because I think this has taught me a lot about who's out there and what we should be doing. It's not just the folks next door. So if you can, please donate to St. Matthew's Church. And I will close with the same blessing that we did last week. It is a Jewish tradition prayer. "In the name of Adonai, the God of Israel, may the angel Mikael be at our right. May the angel Gabriel be at our left. And in front of the angel Uri." the angel Uri and behind us; the angel Raphael; and above our heads the Shikino divine." Thank you so much for coming, and I look forward to next week. We will post a PDF of next week's handout on the Bible Study Group and on the St. Matthew's website, so you can pick that up and can take a look and see what's going on for next week. So thank you, all of you, for coming. We love you. We're so grateful for your participation. If you have questions, please send a note either on Messenger, or better if you can, on the Facebook St. Matthew's Bible Study Group, and I will try to answer your questions, those that you raise, okay? Take care. Good night. Love you all. Bye-bye.